Welcome, everybody, to the August 24 special meeting of the Oregon Environmental Quality Commission. As I so often do, I'm going to start our meeting with pausing to remember that DEQ's mission is to be a leader in restoring, maintaining, and enhancing the quality of Oregon's air, land, and water. And our two special agenda items today speak directly to that, to the budget, which will enable DEQ to pursue that mission, and the required skills and attributes for the next director of the Department of Environmental Quality. We'll be discussing those two things today. So, welcome, everybody. We're very glad that you're with us today as we take on this important work. We will show for the record that all of the commissioners excepting Commissioner Molly Kyle are present today. But Commissioner Kyle has presented us with some comments that she wishes to be part of the record, and so we will share those when we get to that part of the agenda. So with only two items, I don't think we probably have much need to amend our agenda this morning, but we'll take it one step at a time. So the first agenda item is the Agency Request Budget Certification. Leah, will you be leading that for us?
I am going to, I'm here and I'm here for questions, and I'm going to hand it off to Nancy. Nancy's going to lead our discussion here, but yes, I'm certainly here to help. So let's turn it over to Nancy.
Thanks.
Okay. Good morning, everybody. Great to see you. Good morning, Chair George, Vice Chair Brasso, and members of the Commission. For the record, I'm Nancy Bennett, Policy and External Affairs Manager. So we are here today with an action item that is required as part of the submittal of our 2023-2025 Agency Request Budget. So as you know, we submit our budget to the governor on September 1, and as part of that submittal, the Chair of the Commission must certify that DEQ's agency request, must certify DEQ's agency request budget on behalf of the Commission. And so I just have a couple of comments, and Leah may have comments as well. And if Director Whitman comes, I know he'll have comments about this. But just kind of reminding everybody really kind of the extensive work that has gone into the development of this budget. This process actually started over a year ago at the conclusion of the long session, and we've had sort of considerable discussion within our agency about our resource needs. We brought those conversations to our stakeholders in many, many different settings. We talked about that a little bit at the last meeting in July. We brought it to our agency leadership, and then we've also presented to the Commission a number of times this year. And most recently, we presented an update on our proposed policy option packages at the July EQC meeting. Those are available, by the way, on our website right now. If anybody wants to review those, we will also be submitting or posting our full agency request budget on our website after we do that submittal. So if anybody wishes to review that, they can. And just, you know, recognition that we've put forth a really ambitious budget, and I think it reflects the real funding needs we have in many different areas, particularly our Water Quality Division. But we also know there are finite resources. We know that we're going to have a new governor, as we've talked about. That governor is going to have some difficult choices, I think, across the full state enterprise and decisions to make. So I think, you know, I feel really confident that we've put forward kind of, I think, our best thinking about this and given the next governor a lot of options to choose from and a lot of areas that we think are really critical to the agency to fulfill our mission, as we talked about earlier. So just wanted to sort of provide a little bit of that context again for folks to know that, you know, we're coming to this, you know, with a lot of work having been completed up to this point. So that's sort of the end of my comments about this. Happy to answer any questions about the budget. If I see that Director Whitman is on, he may have anything he wants to say, or our Deputy Director, if anything, you want to say about this. But that's the, that's the extent of my prepared comments this morning.
Thank you, Nancy. As you shared, the Commission has been regularly updated on the development of the budget and the budget priorities. So this has certainly been a process in development with lots of opportunity for comment and input. Anybody else have comments or questions on the action before us today? Commissioner Addington.
Thank you, Chair George. I just, and so this may be a really, won't say dumb question, but maybe I sure know this. And I think, you know, we, I think Commissioner Schlosser and I came in October, November, right around there. But when we talk about approving the budget, are, I mean, do we, I don't see any actual numbers, like income expenditures. Do we, have we seen that and looked at that?
I can take a quick stab at answering that. So one thing, we, we don't typically sort of present all of the numbers to the Commission. The action actually is for the Chair to sort of, you know, certify the submittal. But one thing that we do go through as an agency is we go through what's called an audit process. And so we actually have, before we even submit our budget, we have, DAS goes through our numbers and sort of certifies that, you know, we're, we're meeting all the requirements that, you know, that our numbers sort of make sense in terms of the positions and all of that. So we, that is a process that as we're sort of going through this budget development process where we're, you know, they're sort of a backend part of the budget process where we're looking at, you know, our current service level and, you know, how do we add new things to the budget? So we've just been passed audit recently and sort of, you know, that sort of gets us in position to then submit our budget here in about a week. So you're, I think we typically haven't presented all of the numbers because that can be a pretty overwhelming exercise, and I'm not sure entirely how helpful it is to kind of go through that. I mean, certainly, we're part of a large state enterprise. So we're always connected to the larger enterprise in terms of how we're operating in our budget and are we, you know, meeting the needs and fulfilling our requirements. I don't know if Director Whitman or Deputy Director want to add anything to that.
Do you think Deputy Director Felden had her hand up?
Sure. At that, at that point, thank you, Chair George. For the record, Deputy Director Leah Felden, I was going to add on a different point with Nancy's introductory comments, but I think the packages, Commissioner Addington and Chair George, they generally say that positions and the dollars being requested, and then they detail whether this is general fund, whether it's other fund, which for DEQ that usually means fees, or if it's federal fund or a combination of those. So this is the beginning of a process as it's, this is what the agency, you know, requests, and we'll see what the next governor also offers. But I think like Nancy was saying, I just wanted to reiterate that in the last couple of budget cycles, something that both Director Whitman and I have really tried to do is be really transparent with all interested parties in Oregon and the legislature about DEQ's needs, knowing that they're broad and that, you know, we won't necessarily get all of those in every cycle, but just for people to be able to understand what we're seeing and then help to create a path forward for what they see as priorities.
Okay. Thank you very much. Yeah, that's, that is a good point as well, Leah, that this, of course, is a request budget. And at the time that the department submits it, they, they know that they are unlikely to get everything in there. But I think you're right. It is the opportunity to demonstrate and articulate the needs of the department. Nancy.
Yeah, I was just going to add one more thing for Commissioner Addington, you know, another part of our process. So once, you know, certainly we get through, we submit our agency request budget, then the governor will submit her governor's recommended budget, and we go through the legislative process during our legislative hearings on our budget. We do talk much more about some of the, you know, all the different funds that we have, and we do dive into a little bit more of that detail across our program areas around some of those budget pieces. We also work really closely with the Legislative Fiscal Office in the legislature on our budget. And, you know, they're really tracking, you know, how many, you know, more general fund we're having and other fund. And so there are a lot of different, I would say, sort of checks and balances throughout the process that I think keep agencies from overspending their budget or underspending their budget. And so these are things that we go through. It's kind of a long process of, we've talked about. I think I've showed you that graphic where we're just sort of this circle, and it's just sort of this ongoing process where, you know, we take these various steps and then, you know, all along the way, and then we'll have a, we'll have a new agency budget, you know, next, about a, you know, a little less than a year from now. So that's kind of the, the process that we'll be going through over the next year, kind of diving into some of those numbers. Thanks.
Commissioner Addington.
Thank you, Chair George. Just one request unrelated to my last comment, but on the materials in the proposed policy option packages under air quality permitting. Could I just have staff maybe follow up with me on the first sentence, major emission sources or pollution hotspots in Oregon? I just would like to know more about that and talk specifically about what a hotspot is and where they are. Thanks.
Okay. Any other comments or questions? All right, seeing none, I think we are ready to consider a motion at this time. Vice Chair Brasso.
Thank you. I moved at the Oregon Environmental Quality Commission authorized Chair George to sign and certify DEQ's 2023-2025 Agency Request Budget materials on behalf of the Commission as part of the EQ September 1, 2022 budget submittal to Governor Brown and the Oregon Legislature.
Do we have a second?
A second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Do we require further discussion on the motion? Seeing none, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries. All right. Thank you very much. We are now ready for our second special meeting agenda item, and that this is the DEQ Director's recruitment materials. And this pertains to our need to take action on final criteria, skills, and attributes that will be used in the recruitment materials for the next DEQ Director. And as we start, I want to thank many people who spent a good amount of time reviewing the draft and submitting very thoughtful comments. I can assure you that both staff and the Commission has spent time reviewing these and considering them very carefully. And you submitted a lot of ideas that I think enhance the draft that we had, and I really appreciate that. And we'll get into a discussion of these comments and recommendations around which we'll use, which we won't. But I just want to also say that even if a comment does not, sometimes it's a matter of where in the description a particular aspect or skill would occur. Will it be in the minimum qualifications or the required skills or the desired attributes? And in fact, it's also important to remember that this is the first level of screening, right? And we don't know, but we anticipate, hopefully, we'll get a lot of applicants. So also, sometimes a particular attribute can be explored in further actions like the interview process. So just please know that we've spent a lot of time with all these comments, and they really found them very valuable. So I want to thank everybody who took the time to really help us think deeply about those attributes for the next director of DEQ. So with that, how do we wish to dig in to the comments that we received? Just so everybody knows, you probably saw this on the online material, and I'll be right with you, Director. We've received, you know, both the original comments and the summaries lined up by attribute as it might impact the job description. So that's all been very comprehensively put forward for us to consider with, you know, similar attributes and suggestions for wording. Director Whitman.
Thank you, Chair George. For the record, Richard Whitman, Oregon DEQ Director. I am gonna provide the Commission with just a little bit of an overview of the documents that have been provided to you. As you say, said Chair George, we received 21 comments and very thoughtful comments from a variety of sources, including DEQ staff, including a coalition of business groups, including also various advocacy groups as well. So they were very thoughtful. I spent time in the second document that you received, going through those comments kind of piece by piece and trying to provide you with at least my thoughts for what it's worth about the comments. I do want to say a little bit about the process so that you understand is you decide what to put in what bucket. You understand what the consequences of that are. So we have three types of hiring criteria that we use, and this is standard state hiring recruitment process. We have what are called minimum qualifications. We have required skills, and we have desired attributes. So the minimum qualifications are things that a candidate must have in order to advance in the process. The application materials, when we receive them, will be screened by our National Search Recruiting Consultant. And we have selected a national firm, EFL Associates, to lead that work. They will do an initial screen of application materials to make sure that only candidates that have those minimum qualifications are then reviewed. And so then the next level of review will be to review application materials for the required skills. So the minimum qualifications are traditionally things like level of experience, number of years of experience, or number of years of education of various types, or potentially experience of various types. There are things that can be answered relatively objectively. Then the next bucket, if you will, is the required skills. And those are, I would say, a little less, they can be objective, but they can also be less susceptible to kind of yes, no, or multiple choice type answers. And they, they tend to be things like, oh, well, some of the things that are currently on the list are, you know, experience with budgets or experience with labor unions or things like that. And then the final category, which is the most.
Actually, I'm going to ask you a question as you move through these sections. My, my question pertains to the draft required skills, so I'd like to ask it now. So appreciate the distinction you made between that minimum qualification. So one of the things I found myself thinking of as I reviewed the draft required skills, and as you say, thinking about the consequences of putting these various bullets in different sections, with the expectation that somebody who, you know, passes on to further levels of evaluation would have all of the draft required skills? Or could they have most of the draft required skills?
Great question, Chair George. My understanding is they would have to have all of the required skills at least to some degree. So obviously, these are, in the required skills, things that are largely a matter of degree. So for instance, the budget experience example, you know, one person may have, let's say, experience in a private company putting together their annual budget and maybe just did that for one year or something. Another person might have worked in a local government and has put together budgets for years. Both of those people would have the required skill, but they would just have different degrees of the skill. And so they, they would pass both past the screen. And, you know, the extent of their skill in that area would be then considered subsequently in sorting through the candidates. But they would have to have the skill to at least some degree. So I am going to use, we received a written communication from Commissioner Powell, who couldn't be here today. And I'm actually going to use something from her written communication as an example for you to think about. I'm not opining one way or the other on her recommendations, but one of her, one of her recommendations was that state government experience be a, I can't remember if it was a minimum qualification or required skill, it probably doesn't really matter. But if you, if you were to do that, if you were to include that in one of the first two categories as opposed to desired attributes, in order to advance, a candidate would have to have at least some, and it could, you know, there can be different forms of state government experience. You all, as commissioners, have some state government experience now, for instance. But there would have to be some type of state government experience in order to advance. So this is why I wanted to talk about this a little bit, just so you really understand the significance of A, adding things to the list, but B, where you place them. So the consequence of all that in terms of the recommendations that you received from me is I, I did recommend adding a lot of things to the desired attributes because they were good ideas, things that the Commission should think about. I didn't add too much to the minimum qualifications or required skills, and that's the reason. It's the desire to review all a more open field of potential candidates as you get into later stages of the process and think about who is the best candidate for the agency. That's really all I wanted to say. Many of these things are judgment calls, and this is, this is your decision as a commission to think about what, what are the criteria that will lead you to the best candidate. I've given you some thoughts, but they are only that, and I'm happy to answer any questions you have, but this is ultimately a judgment call for the Commission to make. Thank you.
Thank you. Well, since we did bring up Commissioner Kyle's comments, I would like to, for the record, as she, as she requests, we do provide a little bit of information directly from her comments just so that everybody gets the opportunity to hear them. So first, of course, she apologizes for not being able to attend this meeting, but she has prepared these comments in her absence. She, of course, like the rest of us. Thanks, everybody, for the really excellent input that has helped improve all of our understanding of the desirable attributes of the next director, and I completely agree with that. So then she has a few thoughts here, and again, she wants to make sure that the criteria put forth in this job description, specifically the minimum qualifications should be set on the broader side. And this will generate more work upfront with screening interviews, but she makes the case that she thinks that's warranted because she wants to have an inclusive first screen and is willing to do the work in the screening interviews to move forward. She then provides two specific comments that she says she would like to ensure that there's a bullet about demonstrated service and commitment to the public interest. That's in favor of a comment that was received. And then, as Director Whitman suggested, she would like to see demonstrated experience in one or more branches of state government. And then she also suggests that she would like the Commission to consider including a vision for the leadership and management of DEQ, since it's a large regulatory state agency. All good thoughts. I think that also some of the strategic planning that is going on right now is a place where that kind of vision statement is very valuable. So I hope I shared her comments fairly. Now unfairly, perhaps. I'm going to express a concern with one of her suggestions, which is demonstrated experiences in one or more branches of state government. I think this is very valuable, but I think to myself, what if a candidate didn't have experience in state government, but they did in federal or private sector of a large and complex organization or a nonprofit in a large and complex organization? So I appreciate her endorsement of that, but I think people could have experience in other areas where there are rules and regulations and policy that must be followed, and but want to make sure we give full credit to her comments. So Commissioners, right now, what I'd like to do is ask your thoughts. We, of course, have received all these materials, and we received one draft wherein many of the, the suggestions, you know, were attached to the various draft minimum qual's and draft required skills. My thought would be to start focusing on the minimum qualifications, the most, the most critical. If you don't meet these, you will not be considered further. And perhaps we can focus on any comments or questions you have on those, because that is the strictest screen. And then we could, could consider the required skills and so on after that. Does that sound like a good way to proceed? All right, hearing no objections. Do folks have comments or questions on? And again, so I drew our attention, number one, to the draft that includes a summary of the recommendation and then a recommendation. For me, it's often helpful, too, just because these kinds of documents can get very busy, to have kind of a clean draft, which Doctor, which Director Whitman provided, that just summarized his recommendations for our consideration. It's kind of easy for me to look at one and the other and then see which, you know, of these, I think, are worthy of consideration. So does anybody have a suggestion or question about the minimum qual's that they'd like to discuss here? Commissioner Addington.
Thank you, Chair George. Yeah, I'm sort of wondering the best way to work through this, too. I'm going to have a bunch of notes here and thoughts, but I appreciate taking it section by section. I don't have a major issue with any of the three bullets in minimum qualifications, although I, in the third bullet, or maybe it's a separate thing I'm asking, I just feel like there should be some experience related to environmental policy, federal and/or state environmental laws, regulatory programs. I just think that's so fundamental. And I don't even know that I really see that in the draft required, in the required skills section either. So that was one thought that I had.
Thank you. Yeah, that is a really critical one, and like you say, where you place it is going to have an impact on which candidates may move forward. Does anybody have other thoughts about Commissioner Addington's recommendation that minimum qual's needs to have some component of having worked with, with state or federal, you know, who knows, maybe even local, but environmental laws? Commissioner Schlescher, followed by Vice Chair Brasso.
Thank you, Chair George. I agree that it is a pretty essential skill for the next director to have experience with environmental law and environmental policy. I am not set on it being included in the minimum qualifications. I think incorporating that as a required skill rather than a minimum qualification could be helpful to prevent us from screening out really good candidates that are strongly qualified, but maybe have some, like, I don't know, less, not incredibly, like, an incredible amount of experience with environmental law, but have knowledge of environmental law, and if that makes sense.
It does. Thank you. Vice Chair Brasso.
I think I'm, I'm just reflecting back to Molly's comment around really the minimum qualifications, keeping that as broad. Because in my, in my experience, I suspect for jobs, particularly at this level, I don't know that we actually get so many applications that feeling the need to have a high bar on qualifications to reduce the burden on us is, is, is going to be, I don't know if that's necessary, if that's what we're solving for. So I like keeping them, I like keeping the minimum qualifications, frankly, where they, I like them where they're at, but I absolutely agree with Commissioner Addington that making. I like them where they're at, but I absolutely agree with Commissioner Addington that making sure we see um that. Experience um, you know, strong experience in 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 federal and in state environmental policy implementation. And and, you know, that 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 is necessary because it gives us the opportunity to say, okay, is this, is this here? Do they have it as opposed to making it a, you know, a thumbs up, thumbs down exercise at the front end? So um, and 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 having a discussion there. I feel like I I uh Commissioner Addington, I I almost, there is a bullet under required skills. I mean, there's several bullets, but there is one that says strong knowledge of and experience in the implementation of federal and or state environmental laws. I I wonder if there's an edit there um Greg that that gets. Or or if you feel that that captures what you're speaking to, just from the language, not necessarily the placement, but the language itself. It's the third to the bottom bullet of the draft required skills section.
Uh, yeah, Chair George.
Yes.
Um, yes, Commissioner Ross, I I I think that's fair and I um, I I could live with it uh in the required skills. I I do think maybe an edit there to include knowledge of environmental policy um. State legislative process. Uh, I think that would be good.
Okay, so we do have a bullet that deals specifically with legislative experience. But uh let me consider your your recommendation. What it, what if that bullet said strong knowledge of and experience in the implementation of federal law and or state environmental laws or policy? And and it was under required skills, would would that um satisfy your your thinking on this issue?
Could you, could you give me that one more time?
Absolutely. Strong knowledge of and experience in the implementation of federal and or state. Environmental laws or policy and policy, depending on what you, what you'd like. I think, I think your thought was getting to or policy.
Policy, I think, is important. And then where, where's the other bullet on legislative experience or?
Yes, okay, group, if you see it before I do, go ahead and call out.
Yeah. It's at least the one above, it takes there's at least the one right above the, it's the fourth bullet from the bottom. Familiarity, but I don't know if the development is, go ahead.
Yeah, so you, sorry to interrupt you, Sam. Yeah, so familiarity with the development of legislation, program rules and policy.
If I could, Chair George.
Yes, Director Whitman.
There's also a bullet, uh, one, two, three, four, five. Uh, six or seven up from the bottom in the desired attributes, ability to advocate effectively. Uh, before elected and appointed officials at the state and federal levels. Which is relevant to, I think Greg's point as well.
I think you're right.
Well, I I guess I I'm fine um if we, you know, include some policy, the policy comment in that um under the required skills. I, and to, to Sam's point and Molly's point, moving back to the minimum qualifications. Keeping it broad, I agree with that, and I would like to say that generally with with regard to this whole document, I feel like we're. Getting very specific with this document. And so when you, that last bullet demonstrated commitment, I just, we have a lot of qualifying words in this. Like substantial and deep understanding and strong ability that I frankly would. Like to, particularly under the required skills. I I I don't think we should have those. I think we should have understanding of the principles, demonstrated leadership, ability and experience. I don't, I don't know how you evaluate strong ability versus inability. And so that's a general comment I would make in keeping this broad. Um, so.
Okay, and and I also appreciate that you're you're particularly i- in the draft required skills. Because again, that's a a finer evaluation than draft desire or desire attributes. Vice Chair, you have response.
Uh, I I I guess I I I I agreed with um Commissioner Addington on on that, on that point. There's a couple, and I I understand what we're trying to signal, but it makes it, I think it just. I think it, when you place things in the required skills versus the desired attributes. Like in a desired attributes, it gives us an opportunity to discuss and deliberate that as we get candidates and to say, okay, which of these and what of these are better for the agency? Given all these trade offs of the individuals that that, you know, individuals can be stronger in different areas. And it allows us to have that conversation, whereas in draft required skills. It it signals and may limit folks from applying if they see certain language there. So I I I, you know, I I I thought that I, you know, I think for where the agency is moving, I absolutely believe that. An entity, an individual needs to have substantial and demonstrated leadership and commitment in advancing diversity, equity and inclusion, but. It also felt like I I think that's one of those that I I'd want to be able to talk about and want to make sure and 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 see the candidate wholeness. So I I know that I did, uh, you know, for all the, for all the thinking and and advocacy and 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 push to to see the agency do better in those, with that area. I I do think that that's, that should be a conversation piece with candidates to understand how that shows up in their work and how that's balanced with other areas of expertise they bring. So I was seeing that bullet, the second bullet in the draft required skills and wanting to see that either in the draft desired attributes. Or edited back down to what it originally was, which was demonstrated leadership and commitment. Um, but.
I I thought that was one actually in particular that I thought demonstrated leadership was, would be fine in a draft required skill. Um. So let's get more specific about that then. And and I'm also going to play a little bit of the devil's advocate here. Because um, while I know these qualific- qualifiers are difficult, and especially in required skills, I appreciate that point. Um, but let's say, for example, the bullet we were previously talking about, strong. So that's the qualifier, knowledge of and or experience in implementation of federal and or state environmental laws or policy. Well, if you only had knowledge, right, you know, my my son might meet that criteria. He's heard of the, of the Clean Water Act, right? But he doesn't really know what it has to do with anything that might involve his life. So in a, in a few of these, while I understand that that qualifier is um introduces uh some vagueness. In some cases, for example, that bullet, I I make the argument that I I'm going to trust the the screeners. And I'm going to let them say, while this is a bit subjective, I want to see in the materials they submit that they have a, not a weak knowledge. Of federal or state environmental laws, but a significant knowledge. Um, so how about this? Are there any of the qualifiers that we currently, you currently see in the draft required skills? That you think is particularly iffy, is one that you'd like to suggest a change to? Sam, you mentioned uh bullet two, substantial and demonstrated. I'd be fine with demonstrated there.
Yes, that 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 was one that I was gonna mention.
Does anybody have objections to that? Okay, then I would like to recommend that we strike substantial and from bullet two under draft required skills. Um, and Stephanie, I know that you're probably, in addition to my reporting all of this, you're probably helping us out with any final decisions we make on the recommendations.
Yes, Chair George, this is Stephanie Caldera, your Commission Assistant. I have a document which is being edited and redlined to reflect your changes discussed today. And is available to be uh shared on screen prior to any final action by the commission.
Excellent, thank you very much. Any other bullets in draft required skills that somebody would like to to address the the qualifiers or other edits to this section?
Um, yeah, I have one suggestion. It's not, it doesn't really to a qualifier.
That's all right.
But so. First off, I I want to say that I think that the the draft criteria as a whole looks great. And I recognize that this is already a pretty exhaustive list. Um, but I think there are just a few things missing, both from the draft required skills, but also the desired attributes. Um, uh, specifically, I think that empathy and respect are two required skills and attributes. That a DEQ director needs to have and to exercise. Um, in order to successfully achieve the department's mission and vision. And that includes empathy and respect for stakeholders and for staff. And so I have a suggestion for um revising the final bullet point in draft required skills. Um, to uh, so this is the proposed addition to the draft required skills um. Uh, in response to the comments received. But um I would like to revise that last bullet to say um patience, perseverance, integrity and empathy. As uh just to add empathy as a required skill.
Does anyone have comments or questions about this suggestion, suggested amendment? Commissioner Addington.
Well, I I I mean, I'm I'm fine with it, I guess. I just, uh, with all that entire bullet, how are you evaluating that? How are we screening somebody based on whether we think they have, or whether the recruiter thinks they have empathy? Or integrity or pers- perseverance? I just think it's a role for the interview committee, the selection group to figure that kind of stuff out through an interview. But that's my opinion.
Commissioner, that's, that's a good um comment, and Director I'll go to you in just a second. Uh, and I think um, I think it's a very fair question, because these are going to be used as as screens. And at the same time, the other thing that these criteria do is they signal to applicants what is important to the, to the hiring body, right? They say, if you're going to apply for this job, we 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 decided to tell the world that the following thing were required skills. So don't be surprised if we look for you to explain to us how it is that you have these skills. So um, I think there's, there's fairness in Commissioner Addington's point. And I think there's also something about um what you're telling applicants about what the required uh requirements are to do this job well. From the perspective of the hiring body. Uh, Director Whitman.
Yeah, thank you, Chair George. Um, yeah, real briefly, the search firm and the two commissioners who are are. Um, working with the search firm will work. Probably with input from others uh on quest, questions um of the applicants. And so there will be a direct answer to Commissioner Addington. There'll be a question around this last bullet, patience, perseverance, integrity and empathy, that would ask an applicant to say. Tell us, tell us um how you meet this required skill. And then when you get into the interview process for people that make it that far, there will be further opportunity to. Talk to the applicants about about that aspect of their, their person. I hope that's helpful. So these, these, these um criteria tie to questions that will be asked of the applicant, probably both in written form and then in interviews.
Commissioner Addington.
Look, I'm I'm not gonna fall on my sword over this. I think they are um probably required skills, I I really do. I just don't know how you're gonna really evaluating, evaluate them. And I think that we're sort of. I I feel like we're falling into the trap of if it's in the desired attributes, it's somehow less important. I just think desired attributes are the things that set a candidate apart from another candidate. And I would just note that that bullet point is redundant to one that is in. The desired attribute, or, and yeah, desired attributes, the fourth bullet from the bottom. There's actually more than one that are redundant.
Okay, fourth bullet from the bottom, patience, perseverance and integrity.
And I I personally think that's where it should go, and I would support, I also, I I'll support it in neither place, it's fine. I just think that as a screening criteria, that's a tough thing.
Okay, I hear you. So um, what is the will of the group? We can have this in either place, right now it's in both, it shouldn't remain in both. Uh, so um. Who, who would like to see it in, okay, I'm sorry, go ahead, Commissioner Slusher.
Sorry to interrupt. Um. I, so I'm, I'm fine moving it to desired attributes if that's what the rest of the commission wants to do. Um, I I do think that, like personally, I think that it belongs in required skills. Just to send a message to applicants that these are attributes and skills that are necessary to performing the job. Um, and it's not something that we want you to have, but if you don't have these skills, that's okay. So I would prefer to keep them in required skills.
Okay, we hear you. Uh, so uh, that's one vote for keeping it in required skills with the understanding that it would probably need to be explored further. Probably through interviewing or or additional screening. Uh, Vice Chair, where are you?
I'm 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 fine with the required skill. I I I think it's, you know, it's just going to be incumbent on the um, the recruitment firm to, as they, as they're reaching out to talking to candidates. Because I think uh all of this is a, it's it's a communication document and who we want to bring in. And I think so, it just puts more work on our, on our rec- there's more work on recruiters to make sure they're talking through these. Because this is, this is a big document, this is, this has gotten, it's, it's a fairly wieldy set of things we're asking for. And so I do like condensing them, but given what's already here, I'm like, let's, I'm not sure, let's look, I think it's required skills makes sense.
Okay, and Commissioner Addington, you expressed your preference, but also said uh, you you know, it's not a huge sticking point for you. So then my recommendation, unless I hear otherwise, is going to be to add empathy to the final bullet under draft required skills. Moving the and accordingly, and to strike patience, perseverance and integrity from the draft desired attributes. Do I hear any objections? Okay. Now, the big one, draft is, okay, so first, before we move on, are there any other uh final uh recommended amendments to the draft required skills section? Commissioner Addington.
Where did we land? But do people think it's important to have the qualifying language on on? I mean, I heard you, Chair George, on knowledge and experience of laws, federal environmental laws. Um. I don't know, I I just, I just think that I I I'm concerned that we're trying to. That we let the uh perfectly the enemy of the really, really good here. Um. Substantial, deep, strong, I I would move, I would propose getting rid of those qualifying language, but um, and I'll just leave it at that.
Okay, so, but I'm gonna, I'm gonna push you to be more specific. Which ones do you, do you, where do you really think those qualifiers don't belong? So that we, we know where it is exactly that you think the qualifier should be removed.
Um, bullet number two, substantial, bullet number three, deep. Um.
Okay, so I, as I understand it, I'm sorry, I apologize for interrupting you. But I believe we got rid of substantial and in bullet number two, and Stephanie reported that for us. Deep understanding versus understanding of the principles of environmental justice. Does anybody object to deep being removed? No objections. Stephanie, please remove deep from bullet number two. Commissioner Addington, please continue.
Uh, that was bullet number three, yeah.
Oh, sorry, I apologize, you're right, it was three.
Uh, bullet number four, strong.
Uh, strong ability and experience in inclusive leadership that versus ability and experience in inclusive leadership. Including the ability to lead work team diverse and motivated colleagues. Does anybody have objections to the rule of the word strong? Hearing none. Stephanie, please remove the word strong from bullet number four. Okay, go ahead.
Bullet number five, uh, strong twice. It's a.
Yeah, the the working relationships in are additionally strong uh compared to the ability and experience. Um. Strong working relationships, um, I I I would, I would hold value there. Um, working relationships and strong working relationships, I do think are two different things. Does anybody um object to the word uh strong being removed from the beginning of bullet number five? So it would read the ability and experience in working clarity with fellow state, federal, local and tribal leaders, et cetera. Hearing none. Stephanie, please remove the word strong from bullet number one, three, four, five. Okay, Commissioner, keep going.
Uh, bullet number six, strong ability to communicate verbally, verbally and writing. Well, you know what, I I'll back off on that one.
Thank you.
I'll I'll leave that one.
Good, I think we're in agreement. Any others?
Not, not in this section.
Not in this section. Great, thank you. Any other comments or questions on the recommendations as we have presented them for draft required skills?
Uh, in Chair George, I'm sorry.
That's all right.
Would this be the time to talk about a a desired attribute that I think should be included in required skills?
Yes, it it would, please do that now. Yes, it it would. Please do that now.
I I have, well, so two things, the in um uh I don't know which bullet number it is, draft desired attributes on the second page. I I would like to see the fifth bullet included in required skills. And I would I would propose striking strong. Strong ability and experience in working with regulated entities. I would.
Okay, so I see that a little bit differently. I think that this is a really key desired attributes and one that we will be looking at very especially. But if somebody had otherwise excellent experience, but they just have not had the opportunity to work with regulated communities, I would want the opportunity um for them to to come forward. But I I am only one of several. Uh other commissioners, how do you feel about that? Does it belong in desired attributes or required skills?
Um, I I agree with you, Chair George. I think it's a great desired attribute. I would be concerned with including it as a required skill, because I think that it would potentially screen out otherwise very qualified applicants. Um I also think require or a regulated entity is a bit vague. Um so does that mean regulate entities that are regulated in Oregon? Does that mean entities that are regulated under any state environmental law? Or entities that are regulated under any law? Because I think technically everyone is regulated under some form of law or policy.
Okay. Uh Sam, what's your thoughts?
I I I agree with the prior comments in in part because I think this is where this is where you start to separate out candidates um in terms of uh whether it's a a candidate with, you know, I I think this is where it comes into the matrix of all the different things we want to see in a candidate. I do feel it falls below there, in part because also just being able to strong, strong ability to communicate with all those entities is above. And 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 so I agree that um I've in keeping with not adding anything else, also for required uh required attributes, I I required skills, I I think it, I like it where it where it is.
Okay. Um and Commissioner Addington, can can you live with this uh with leaving it under desired attributes?
Look, I, what you all just said, uh I feel the same way about several required skills that we have in here, that we are limiting the pool of candidates. If if somebody doesn't have demonstrated leadership and advanced in D E I, doesn't mean they're not capable of doing that and being a great director of the department. And so I just think it's inconsistent.
Okay.
So I mean, it doesn't matter if I can live with it. Um I I I think it should be in there. I can, you can note my objection or whatever you want to do.
Sure. I'd be I'd be happy uh to do that. And um I appreciate that you brought it to the table. Now, that being said, we do appear to have a a majority support for leaving it where it is. Under that circumstance, as as you you acknowledge, we do have to to move forward, and I do appreciate your note. Would you still recommend removing the word strong, or would you like it to remain?
Uh, I don't like the qualifiers all the way around, so I would take it out.
Any objections to removing strong under the one, two, three, four, fifth bullet on the second page?
I I do think you, I I I guess I would, I I would object to, I I would object there, but and and so we're parsing these different things, and I I I I this is challenging, um but I I I would object to taking strong out. I I think it's it's a it's a measure that I I I know that I'll be looking closely when when we when we when we start parsing our candidates.
I will admit that despite the fact that I can see that it is a qualifier and it is a judgment call. I too would like to keep it, because I would like to signal that this is particularly important in this section. And you're right, this is this is very difficult stuff, right? And we don't want to wordsmith every line, but at the same time, some of these these details are important. They're gonna make a difference about um how these candidates are evaluated. So um Commissioner Schlescher, uh sorry to put you on the spot, but do you have any thoughts about the word strong in that bullet?
I I honestly could go either way there, so I'm happy to if if the majority wants to keep strong, that's fine with me. But I think there are good arguments on both sides.
Okay.
I'm fine keeping it.
All right. Thank you, Commissioners. We are going to leave that one as is. But now let's get into the difficult part of the draft desired attributes. And I'm going to ask um everybody's patience in allowing Vice Chair Barasso to provide us any uh thoughts that are really important to him about this section. Because I do know he has a time constraint, but this this is important stuff, and we want to make sure everybody is heard. So Commissioner Barasso, what what are your thoughts?
Beyond the fact that this is a this is a long list, I do agree that a lot of these things fit here. So I don't have any strong ob- objections or edits to this section. And frankly, I'm interested in hearing what others have, but um you know, this uh overall, it's that this is a lengthy document, and this is, and and so the fact that this section happens to be the longest, I'm okay with that. Um uh and 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 I don't I don't have anything else to add. Thank you. Thank you, Chair George.
Okay. All right, then, let's go for it. What do Commissioners, what are your comments and thoughts on this section? Commissioner Schlescher?
Thank you, Chair George. Um so I really just have have one recommendation. Um the first bullet point on the second page, so the ability to set tone and direction. Um, right now, I think that that it, I think the the tone of this desired attribute is a little bit I don't know, authoritarian feeling. Um so I would I would recommend revising it to say the ability to set tone and direction for senior leadership at DEQ and promote a culture of collaboration and accountability that fosters mutual trust and respect.
Okay, I like that wording. Um and I I'm just gonna share, I also like the current wording. I think we can, in in that kind of environment, also hold people accountable. Um we we have permit backlogs, right, that we need to fix, and we've made commitments to fixing. We sometimes have legal judgments upon us wherein we need to get certain TMDLs out in a certain timeframe, and if we don't, there are severe consequences. So um I I could be, I could go either way on that. Is that, do other people have thoughts on that one bullet? Commissioner Addington, I see it on your face. What do you got?
I I I mean, again, I'm not gonna I I'm not gonna object to to this. I I just think the bullets I just think that that's something that shouldn't, I think that's something that comes up in that interview. I just don't know how you measure that. So that's fine.
Commissioner Schlescher, how would you feel about that being something that's explored in an interview question?
I think that it is a great thing to explore through an interview question. Um I do think uh as I as I mentioned earlier, I think that this this draft doesn't include any reference uh to respect and the importance of respect and treating staff with respect and having mutual respect between staff and the director and regulated entities and other stakeholders and the director. And so I think this is a good spot to add a reference um to respect while also maintaining accountability. Um I'm not advocating for removing accountability from the desired attribute altogether. I I totally agree that accountability is really important. I also think accountability goes both ways a lot of times. And so I would just like to see something in here that really emphasizes the desire to have a director that really wants to foster a collaborative and accountable agency um and and really build and promote mutual trust and respect. I I think that that um is an attribute that Director Whitman has exercised um really amazingly well. And I would hate to see us hire another director that doesn't have those attributes.
Okay, so consider this. We have a bullet further down this list, says experience leading and inspiring deserve diverse staff in fostering an inclusive culture of belonging. Um can that speak to some of those values? I have to admit, I also have a li- a little bit of concern with this bullet. Because it says you have to have experience leading and inspiring deserve diverse staff. And um a lot of organizations are not as diverse as they would like to be. Um so they might have experience leading and inspiring the values of diversity, but they may not have diverse staff. I don't know if I'm being overly literal there, um and that is a goal of DEQs to increase the diversity of our staff. But for example, I don't know if we would say, do we have diverse staff today? I'm not sure what the answer to that question would be. But let's take those issues one at a time. Um this is one that speaks to to the tone of leadership of of one of an inclusive culture. Is is, does that capture it, or do you think there's, it sounds like you think maybe there needs to be more explicit somewhere?
Um I I think they're separate issues. Um I think inclusivity is 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 different from accountability and trust and mutual respect. Um I I think from just a management standpoint, it's so essential to treat the people that you're managing with mutual respect and to to build trust and also be inclusive. I think those those are two essential components, but they're somewhat different or separate.
Okay, experience, leading, and inspiring diverse staff and fostering an inclusive culture of belonging and mutual respect?
Um yeah, my my concern there is it just implies that it's really only important to have those attributes in the context of diversity. Which I do think it's essential to have in the context of diversity, but I also think that it's essential to have it just in the context of accountability and management in general. But if everyone is opposed, that's fine with me. I'm 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 not gonna um die on the top of this hill, but I do think that those are important attributes for the next director to have.
Well, I think I I agree. All right, uh if anybody has a suggestion that they think would capture this well, um go ahead and share it. Uh otherwise, I'm going to suggest we move on. All right, let's make note of that concern and the importance of making sure that a respectful tone is something that we certainly want to see in this director. Um it does also speak to emotional intelligence, but I do not want to um take away from the the standalone importance of fostering relationships uh based upon respect. Okay, uh does anybody, it was anybody else concerned, or am I being overly literal in my concern of for, while while we're on that bullet? Uh experience, leading, and inspiring diverse staff. Is that diverse staff going to be aspirational? Or are we requiring that they have experience leading diverse staff? Because I just fear that there are too many organizations that are not as diverse as they would like to be.
I I I I I think I agree with you. I mean, experience is uh experience is a challenge. It's it's a framing that I I I don't I desire, yeah, there's there's a wording there that I think if it changed, would make me feel more comfortable with that. Um given, I think, given the way that that could be interpreted.
Could somebody from, you know, the state director or somebody else, maybe you can advise me. Am I being overly literal there? Or if you haven't led diverse staff, would you be lower on the, you know, value chain of here? Director Whitman?
Yeah, so several things, Chair George. Um I think at least my understanding of the intent behind this is uh this is diversity in all its uh manifestations. So it, you know, we're not just talking about racial and ethnic diversity. We're talking about um diversity of background, uh diversity of lived experience, uh diversity of age, you know, the everything. So so that's one thing. And then um I do think there's value here in having diverse staff in that sense of I I in in this is just coming from maybe my own personal experience at DEQ right now. But we are at a time in history when um sensitivity to the different lived experiences of different staff is really important. And so I think you could if you're uncomfortable with experience, you could have this be ability. So ability to lead and inspire diverse staff, that leaves it a bit more open to a value judgment of individual candidates of can they do this? Not so much have they done this. So that is something you could think about. Um so those are my comments. I hope they're helpful. I do think, I do think the ability is important.
I completely agree. And and just to clarify my comment, um I in no way wish to uh lessen the signal that the values for diversity and working with a diverse uh workforce is is a very key and fundamental qualification we're looking for. So I certainly hope that um while I did not provide any impression otherwise, um I was just frankly speaking to the reality that many places are not as diverse as they might like to be. So uh what about the director's uh suggestion? Ability to lead and inspire diverse teams? Does that help, or or does that not satisfy people? Commissioner Addington?
Chair George, I I agree with you. Um and I would support that if we do it everywhere else in the section as well.
Well, so just just to come back on that, going back to your bullet, strong ability and experience in working with regulated entities. Uh I like experience there. I wouldn't want to get rid of it there. So I think I appreciate your comment. But there's a few places here that I I would want the experience to stay. Uh did I hear you, Vice Chair?
I I I think just recognizing where we're going down, and I mean, and and I don't mean to um I don't mean to this is, as I'm stepping back and thinking about the comments I said and recognizing I'm rescheduling meetings as we go since we've gone over time. Um I've, these are in the draft desired attributes. So this this, all of this does give us the, and I think there's a reason why the the language, I think there is a reason why the language was chosen. And so I I'm I'm okay leaving the qualifiers in this section. I guess it's just, part of me is just thinking through, given the length of this list, how i- i- it's it's almost the onus gets on to wanna have a, I wanna have a, I want folks to be able to see this. I want us to be able to see this and have conversations through this as we're going through the interview process. Um and using these desired attributes as a way to to move, you know, to to evaluate candidates. Um but uh it goes to Richard, Director Whitman here around just how are we making sure that candidates are applying, seeing this, and recognizing that these are desired attributes? And not everyone needs to have every single one of these. Um and so I I in the interest of not getting into words with anything, I am okay with the way the desired attributes generally stand. I appreciate the effort that's gone into that. I think my concern is how we how we actually implement this next step and make sure we have a pool of of qualified candidates.
That's very well said, uh Vice Chair Barasso. It, we we do need to remember that this draft desired attributes um is more of that evaluation and less of a yes, no screen. So with that understood, I I would uh I would abandon my concern there. Um, okay, so then back to your point, Commissioner Addington, I hear your your frustration and your desire to get rid of the qualifiers. Uh similar to uh what my question to you on the draft required skills. Um are there bullets where in particular you you think that the qualifiers are are particularly difficult for that issue? Are there ones you'd like to raise for our attention?
Well, uh Well, uh, again, I just, I, I just don't think we're very consistent throughout the document, and I'll give you an example of on the second page of the desired attributes. And by the way, if we ever have to do this again, which I hope we don't, we should have numbers uh, for these. The second bullet, substantial experience, then the third bullet, experience, I, I mean, but why, 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 why is one more important than the other? Cause all we did here is we cut and paste comments from people, and, and I think we should be making this a consistent document. That's just not consistent. What, why is one more important than the other?
I hear you, and I'm also just gonna stay literal. Um, does anybody object to getting rid of substantial in the second bullet on the second page? Hearing none, Stephanie, please acknowledge that we're going to get rid of substantial in the second bullet of the second page. And, and two, I, I also to the, the quality or the, the substance of uh, Director Addington's comment. I, I want, I do think it's worth saying, it's not to say that we don't think, you know, substantial experience is important, but but that we may be adding um, value words that um, for desired attributes, we're going to be doing a certain amount of, of ranking and evaluating a, a disparate set of qualifications. Uh, it's, it's not to say that these things aren't important, but that there are several things that we want to see experience with, so um, I think it's, it's fair to that there's some, some real fairness in his, his observing the, the kind of places where we use certain words and where we don't. Is there another bullet where to you, it just really doesn't make sense?
Probably. No, I'll, I'll leave it, I'll leave it alone for now unless I see something. I, I would just say that I, I sort of agree with Sam that I, I, I think this list is too long. Quite frankly, I think it's redundant. Um, I'll point out um, if the, if now's the time to do that, uh, on that same page, one, two, three. The eighth bullet. And then if you move down five or six more, those are the same, I think, or at least they're they're, they're very close to the same.
Yeah.
I guess, yeah, so I would, I would suggest deleting one of them.
I agree. Is that, wait, has everybody found the, the relevant bullets? All right. Folks, so um, I think we can, I think we can direct staff to, to combine and condense those two bullets. Does that make sense to everyone? Okay. Greg, any others that, that really stand out?
So if we go down below that, where we just were with the, the first instance of experiencing man experience managing within a matrix style organization, we go down one, to the third bullet there, um.
Can you read it, Greg? The first, can you just read the first couple sentences?
Yeah, uh, the ability and or lived experience. Okay, that bullet, and then the next one, the ability to appreciate and lead. I I think these are obviously very important, and I think that the commission or the commissioners who are working on selection have to have these things in mind. I just think they say again what we've basically said throughout this document. And, and I just think they're a little bit redundant and, and wordy, and I would suggest taking them out. I, I, I'm not, if you think it's super important to leave them in there, I'm fine with it, but I, I just think the document is really as Sam said, really.
That's fair, that's fair. Um, I personally, of those two bullets now that we're discussing, the ability and or lived, I, I would advocate for keeping that, um, as somebody who has worked with um, historically marginalized communities in many capacities, um. The fact that that is an overt value is very different than, than much of those communities experienced. Um, and that being said, I, I also have, uh, appreciate the value of the second bullet, but, but I can concede that on a list of desired hat, hiring attributes, um, this issue of an organization that is on the precipice of transformational change, that, that's still underway, right? Our strategic planning process is still underway, our DEI work internally is still underway. Um, this is of critical importance, but whether or not it does, it, it belongs on this list, I'm not sure, or I think it's also an issue that could be explored in an interview question and evaluate how somebody responds to this could be very, very telling and very important. But I'm also happy, I want to hear what other folks think and what they think about this bullet. The one that begins with the ability to appreciate and lead, um, its presence on this list. I'd like to hear what you have to think, what you're thinking.
Um, I, I almost think that that could be part of a job description and less a criteria for hiring. Um, I think that it is important to make sure that applicants understand that DEQ is an agency um, that is on the precipice of uh, transformational change, but that to me doesn't seem to be a, a significant hiring criteria.
Other thoughts? I'm inclined, Director, to ask your opinion on this one, because uh, uh, you're in this organization and you are in part leading this current change, which will continue after you are gone, but it might, it might have value that we don't see from the outside, Director.
Yeah, thank you, Chair George, and uh, to Commissioner Slescher's point, um, I think this will go in some of the job announcement materials, and we will signal in that way, um, that fact about where DEQ is at. That said, I would um, support keeping it on the list. I think it is sufficiently important. It is several commissioners have noted, part of the purpose of this document is to signal to applicants what's going on at the agency. We'll do that through the job announcement. But I think having it here in the desired attributes sends a pretty strong signal to applicants that there is a lot of change going on at the agency. Um, whether that's around DEI, or it's around uh, hybrid work arrangements, or um, generational change in the workforce. Um, there is a lot of change going on, and so I think it is worth keeping.
Okay, thank you all for your input. Uh, hearing all of the input, I am inclined to leave it. I'm gonna provide one last uh, opportunity for objection. All right, hearing none, it will stay. Again, I want to ask folks, do you have a suggestion or question about the remaining criteria in the draft desired attributes section uh, beyond what we have already discussed?
Um, uh, Chair George, I just have a few points, uh, spots where I noticed there's redundancies that I think we could condense the criteria. Um, so for example, um, below the second matrix organization bullet point that we combined um, with the one above it, uh, it says ability to advocate effectively for actions that advance the mission of the agency before elected and appointed officials at the state and federal levels. Um, the next bullet point below that, ability to represent the agency before the legislature is redundant. Um, and then experi- the one below that, experience in an executive level position that includes legislative and rulemaking processes, I think may be encompassed by the, the first ability to advocate bullet point, um, but I'm also uh, totally open to leaving that as a separate bullet as well.
I think I'd argue for leaving that one separate. I think it has a slightly different focus, the, the importance of um, working in legislative and rulemaking processes rather than the, the consultation roles and communication roles of working with elected officials. Any problems with that? Okay, other suggestions? Commissioner Addington?
The next um, bullet. But uh, one, two, three, four, five from the bottom, willingness to travel to different parts of the state and build relationships. I think is covered in required skills. I thought I saw that there. But if it, if it isn't, it should be.
It is, um, in required skills, it says commitment to travel to different parts of the state and build relationships.
Yeah. So.
Thank you for catching that. All right, so let's strike it from desired attributes because it is in required skills. Commissioner Addington?
Um, I, this is my last one. I'm just gonna be quiet. I'm sorry for, for uh, causing problems. Uh, the second from the bottom, okay, that's not true, I have two more. The uh, second bullet from the bottom, the successful candidate should um, of, of course, they should have this. Um, I, I don't think this is worded particularly well, and I think it would be something that's introductory or in a job description as well. It should if we leave it, we should, it should, attribute should be attributes. I don't know how you measures, measure that either. And maybe we could say really strong ability. I'm just kidding, I don't want.
Well, again, I think maybe there's an opportunity to combine two. Um, well, the, not, this one is expressly about stakeholders. I was thinking of one, two, three, four, five, a strong ability and experience in working with regulated entities. Well, that would, would include a commitment to accessibility and responsiveness uh, to stakeholders and partners. Um, partners, I think, is also captured in other bullets.
I guess, if, if, I, I, I would just say maybe just strike the successful candidate should have the attribute that make him or them uh, him or them show it. I do just leave it and say commitment to accessibility and responsiveness to stakeholders and partners.
I do think that improves the bullet. Any objections to striking everything up to commitment? Hearing none, Stephanie will record it and make it so. Any other um, obvious redundancies or other amendments?
I, my last one is the last bullet, but you could, you already know what it is. It's to strike the first three words, but I, I don't, I'm not gonna.
Substantial demonstrated and successful experience.
I think it's redundant to many other bullets, but I just think, again, substantial and demonstrated.
Uh, we, I agree. I think that that one is redundant um, to the uh, the second draft required skill, demonstrated leadership and commitment in advancing diversity, equity and inclusion.
Creating, implementing and participating to, I, I think that's a, that's a fair argument. Does anybody think that? Um, so our second draft required skill is demonstrated leadership and commitment in advancing diversity, equity and inclusion. Uh, does anybody feel that experience creating, implementing or participating in DEI related activities adds something significantly different to a desired attribute? I don't think so either. Does anybody object to removing that bullet because it's covered in required skills? Hearing none, Stephanie, please remove that bullet because it is a required skill. Well, you know, I think um, the, the few deletions or combinations we've made in this section um, don't, don't change the intent, don't change the values reflected to here, but it has made it a little more succinct. Does anybody have uh, any additional comments about this section? I know we have gone over time, and so I do want to be respectful of people's time, and I do think we've made this a little more compact without changing the values that it reflects. Okay, so uh, Stephanie has, oh excellent, has reflected our amendments here. Let's give everybody a minute or two to just take a look at that. Just a question, Stephanie, that uh, top, a highlighted bullet has a pink organizational structure. Are we, is there something significant about the organizational structure?
Thank you, Chair George. Um, Steph- this is Stephanie Caldera, your commission assistant. That is a comment which is noted in the formatting, that the two uh, yellow highlighted items are to be condensed into one bullet for your discussion and direction. Um, so the structure is simply highlighted as a formatting element.
Excellent, got it, that those two are going to be combined. I think this looks good. Comments, questions? Good. All right, if uh, we do not have any further comments or questions, uh, we do need to take action because these will be used as the screening criteria. So at this time, I will entertain a motion.
Um, I move that the Oregon Environmental Quality Commission approved the director's recruitment hiring standards, criteria and policy directives, materials, including required criteria, skills and desired attributes as discussed and amended at the August twenty fourth, twenty twenty two special meeting and direct DEQ to initiate the recruitment process for DEQ's director using these materials.
We have a second.
Second.
Do we require further discussion? Commissioner Addington?
Uh, Chair George, thanks. I uh, I, I just want to restate what I said, I think at the last meeting, which is I am of the opinion that this feels rushed, um, it, to try to do this by the end of the year, and with the uncertainty of the election season and a new governor, it make, it would make more sense to me to for us to be in an interim position until there's some stability, and I think that would increase the pool of candidates that we get. That said, I'm, I'm not gonna, I'm going to support the motion. Uh, it seems silly not to. I know we're moving ahead with this, and so I appreciate, I just want to say that, and, and that I, I am of the opinion that we should have the biggest pool we can, and that had to do with many of my comments um, related to the description.
Thank you for that, Commissioner Addington. Uh, we will uh, note that, um, and I appreciate your uh, value for wanting to get the biggest pool of candidates. I think uh, that's a, a shared value. Um, and at the same time, I, I take a slightly different perspective, at least on this step. I was, I was considering as preparing for the, the meeting today, uh, the, the excellent impact input we received. And I remember thinking to myself, if we had left this out for another month, would we really have gotten different input that would really put us into a different place, and um, I didn't think so, but that's not um, that's just a different perspective. It's not to disqualify yours in, in any way, and I appreciate your value for seeking a large pool. And we're going to do our very best to get that large pool. Uh, we have a recruitment uh, organization coming on soon, and we are going to get these uh, materials out far and wide. Do we have further discussion before action is taken on the motion? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying. Hearing none. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. Thank you all for your very thoughtful work on this. And again, I want to thank our staff, and I want to thank the the uh commenters. You gave us a lot to think about, and there is a long ways to go. So uh, we know we will be um having a lot more discussion about this before we get anywhere near finalists. Uh, Director Whitman or um Deputy Director Felden, do you have any further comments for us today?
The only thing I have for you, Chair George and commissioners, is just a reminder that uh, the next meeting of the Environmental Quality Commission is on September twenty second and twenty third. Tentative location for the meeting is Salem. And um details forthcoming shortly on uh that meeting, including the agenda and uh the location and uh plans for that. That's all.
All right. Thank you very much. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Do I have a second? Any objecting to adjourning? Hearing none. We are adjourned at eleven oh seven. Thanks again. Have a great day.
Thanks, everybody.